This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of March 15th, 2021. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess, that's here. Mayor Proton Johnson.
Mayor Proton Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noah?
Noah, here.
Mayor Wolligora?
Here.
I'm sorry, I just picked up on that. We're live now, so we know it's you. So we are, I just want to show everyone where we are live here at City Hall and with most of our department heads and and virtually as well. So welcome to everyone. And if we'll, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. Want me to approve the agenda for this evening? I move we approve the agenda.
Okay.
When you're ready.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Wolligora?
Aye.
Okay, and then we do have a couple of modifications to the agenda this evening. You have both of them. The first one would be the add the consent agenda for the amendment, budget amendment. And then the other one, I'd like to remove 14H, which is the first reading of the revised ordinance because we're just not ready.
Okay. Separate motion. 14H, right? So I moved that to the add a budget amendment request to the police department. An increase of $7,478 for the purchase of two solar powered radar signals with software to the consent agenda. And I, and that we remove 14H from our agenda.
Say it.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wolligora?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of March 1st, 2021 and special session of February 17th, 2021. The only, the only thing I noticed, February 17th, that was the Joint Planning Commission meeting.
Yes.
I had, it was noted that I had left the meeting early and then the vote was noted as unanimous five to zero, but it should have been four to zero because I was not here.
Correct.
It's just a technicality. It still passed unanimously, but it said five to zero and it should be four to zero.
And Planning Commission left, so they're still in session. I never, I voted, we voted to, excuse me, and then they just underflying it.
Longest planning meeting ever. Anybody else with any issues to any of those minutes? All right, citizens, appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. It's the only time during the council meeting you're allowed to address council. And we'll, this evening we'll take live. If you'd like to, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. See no one live. Anyone indicate on the chat window or virtual world? Okay.
I would like to speak if possible.
Okay, please state your name and address for our records.
Okay, my name's Randy Zeeman and I live at 439 South State Avenue, Alpena.
Okay, go ahead, Randy. We can hear you.
Well, one of the issues that I was going to bring up was face-to-face meetings and I'm hoping that, I'm understanding that their meetings are open for face-to-face council meetings now.
Yes, sir.
Is that the case?
Yes, that is the case. We have, under the current guidelines, we do have a, a limit on the amount of people that we can get in, in this room and still be six feet apart. But I get, and we're not at that point right now, so I guess we would, I guess we would cross that bridge when we get there if we end up having a meeting where there are more than what we can accommodate. If that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's awesome. I appreciate it. And that's, that's great to hear because I know there was some issues with myself last meeting and one other person that I talked to about being able to get unmuted, but we're past that, so that's awesome.
Okay.
Other issue, the other, the other issue that I'd like to bring up is I would like to request that private residents in Alpena be removed from having to be inspected for rent, for rentals. I do understand that, you know, private homes or, or, or investment properties that are rented out, you know, that are government subsidized, the rentals are subsidized. I understand that, but I do not understand why a private residence being rented to somebody that's not government subsidized would have to have an inspection. I really do feel that that is a, a trampling on a private property owner's rights and I would like to, I would really like to counsel to, to consider, consider that issue. And that is all I have to say for tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that, Randy, to a, to our, our, and I'm gonna probably screw her title up because it's really long now, but let's just go with building department head for now and for her to cut, to, to take a look at that and come back to us with a, with a recommendation on, on your concern there.
I appreciate that. I just under, I just believe that people that, you know, that are renting somebody's home, they're, they're intelligent enough to decide whether a home is safe enough and, and, and fits, and fits their needs. And I just never could understand why the city, I was involved in, in private residents. And like I said, I do understand that if there's government subsidies, that, you know, there's a whole different criteria for that. I understand that, but I couldn't understand, you know, private, private agreements between people. And that's what I had to say for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
All right, you have a great night.
You too, thanks. Okay, all right. And no, no other indication of public comment? I will. Continue on. We don't have a public hearing tonight, so the next item is the consent agenda. It's A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $358,960.72. B is a budget amendment request to increase the capital outlay to account for the purchase of a tabulator in the amount of $6,148. C is a budget amendment request to increase the capital outlay to account for the additional security upgrades in the clerk's office in the amount of $3,602.90. And D is a council reappointment of Steve Wilson to the Harvard Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring on April 1st, 2024. Thank you. And E is, is a budget amendment request for the radar speed signs in the amount of $7,478. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wolligora?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is communications and petitions. We have the Thunder Bay Arts Council informational report and budget request. Tim Poonlight is here.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Tim Poonlight and here with Augen of Music to just give an update on the sculpture projects and to give you a little idea of what's next. So on the screen, you can see, by the way, if you're interested in more details, you can go to the Thunder Bay Arts Council website and actually just look for the sculptures tab. And there's a little bit more elaboration history. If you go to that slide, Steve, please. This may be difficult for you to see, but it's just a little recap of where we've gone so far, going back to the 1978 sculpture at the Western Museum. And you can see the, the resuscitated sculptures beginning in 2017 with global collaboration awareness and the departure of the great blue herons. 2019, we did three sculptures, you can see there. And then our most recent one, which is to be placed in May, if all goes well. It was actually scheduled for last fall, but COVID kind of put us a little behind similar letters. You can see that's scheduled here to be placed in, in, by the end of May, at best, yes. So if you go to the next slide, please. Actually, you know, one more, that just shows you a little bit more of the website. As you all know, the letters were finally installed a little later than we anticipated, but COVID again put us significantly behind. But that's all essentially done, at least in terms of initial phase. What gets done around that, of course, will be part of our overall effort to, to develop in Shakewas Park. We can imagine landscaping of various forms and fashion at some point in the future, but the integrity of the sculpture is, is complete. And that was a huge success, thanks to the Besser Company for their craftsmanship, their skilled trades. Without them, we would not have been able to complete it despite all of the, the resources that we were able to pool. We are pretty much done with the receipts in terms of turning in receipts to the city. The one thing that's outstanding is the plaque, which will be placed in, in May as well, roughly May, when the weather permits. So if you go to the next slide, please. Obviously, you can see the finished product there and how already community is embracing it. I've seen lots of photos, personal photos and so forth in various capacities. So we're really pleased with that being done. Next slide, please. And that's the plaque. It's hard for you to see, but of course, the city is prominently recognized there on the list of major donors. But we have quite a list of donors from public entities such as the city to private foundations and private businesses as well as individuals in the community. Next slide, please. So you all know that the sculpture for 2020 was the Ritter Intertwined Sculpture. And you've seen concepts, designs of this already. Actually, I have a framed version of it. And this is Jake Ideman. He's the artist that did the high wheel bicycle that gets lots of acknowledgements. And he will be finishing this up. He's in the process of, as I said, it should be done for installation and complete installation by the end of May, if all goes well. That rock is going to work with us to get the foundation in place. And it's just a matter of installing artwork. So if you go to the next slide, these are just some reflections on, you know, he's done some work for the city and the bike racks, which are really nice. He does, it's incredible work. Again, that is hand forged material. It's not welded, which is kind of a lost, a lost skill, lost art. Next slide, please. And that's the plaque that will also be placed as soon as weather permits. And then you can see the, the long list. We actually had over 100 people get individual donations through the giving to state efforts at the community foundation. So this afforded an opportunity for a lot of people to get small amounts and really foster that community project. Okay, and then the next slide, I believe, is sales, which is our next sculpture for 2021. Anne Delner is the artist. She's done, she's done several pieces for us. But this is a concept, a 3D concept of one of three sculptures that will be assembled together. The tallest of which would be about 12 feet high and the others will be somewhere between four and five feet and will be at varying angles and shapes. But the idea here is to capture regatta, the Thunder Bay, and, and capture the sailing theme of our community. This project is coming along very well. We are well on our way to raising funds. We would like the city to be part of this again. The Besser Foundation is committed in the fourth year, a five-year long commitment to making these sculptures happen as long as we can get 20% matching. That they would be a 20% match to the total project. And you guys have been with us from the beginning, so if you can figure out a way to give them another $5,000 as part of the sculpture for 2021, that would be very much appreciated. We've got several other donors coming forward and we're in very good shape. So the location of this has yet to be determined. We need to work with the city as we have in the past to determine the actual location, but Anne is already on her way towards constructing this. And if all goes well, I don't think the COVID will cause as much problem as it has in the past. We should be able to have this installed in September of this year. And that will be the launch of the Thunder Bay Arts Council's 50th anniversary. One of the oldest arts councils in the state of Michigan. So it's kind of exciting. Augen, do you have anything you want to add?
Not really, no. I think we covered it.
He's been out there coming to pay, to raise the money and really appreciate it. So any questions?
I don't know. That's awesome. I don't see any. I think you're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You guys are giving the support each and every year. I don't know. Can I get you to go back to the slide? The second one, please, because I just want to draw our attention to the fact that, you know, you guys give us $5,000 a year and you have them throughout. If you look, one more slide there. If you look at the very bottom, just with the 12 initial sculptures and we're going into our 13th. You know, we've basically provided $150,000 of added value just in the cash and in kind contributions we've received to make this happen. And your portion of that is helping us then, you know, get the buy-in from other sources of revenue. And in 2019 alone, those three sculptures brought essentially an added value of about $52,000. And you guys gave $5,000 towards that, those dogs. And, and it also helped develop the, the Alpena sculptures. So you can see that the investment is well worth it. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you much. We'll receive file on, on your board.
There's a motion?
Oh, we will in a second. I will be receiving file.
Second. Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Wolligora?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now down to, excuse me, new business. A is Suez contract compensation adjustment. And Rich Selinger is here.
Per our contract with Suez for operation of the Hunter Sewer Utility, they can request a contract modification when new regulations result in increased cost of utility and their operational costs. This is the case with the language added to our National Pollution Elimination Discharge System, NPDES permit. Eagle is handling, requiring the utility to develop and implement a pollutant minimization and source elimination program with PFOS, PFO. The cost increase in utility for testing needed will add approximately $4,400. Mike Lewinsky is on the line, but I just wanted to reiterate that, that $4,400 is strictly our, the cost incurred for the test to be run. We already pay Suez for collection samples, monitoring and all that, but this is strictly out-of-pocket expenses for the testing. Based on the attached memorandum from Mike Lewinsky, utility manager for Suez, it's my recommendation to city engineer that city council approve the request to increase Suez's operation and maintenance budget by $4,400.
Just the only question is, is you said that, that came down from the state as a requirement for the PFOS going forward. Is this going to be something we do every year going forward?
Yeah, it is. For the PFOS, PFO. And Mike, I know you're online. You can certainly jump in here at a time, but we don't see this going away in the near future.
The reason that they instituted the minimization plan was a sampled various voice water treatment plants around the state and then compared the concentrations of the PFOS in sludge and the flow coming into the plant and in the discharge and compared that. And based on that comparison, they felt that there was a source of PFOS in our collection system that was contributing to the biosalads, the sludge, having a higher than normal concentration, which is concerning because if we don't, if we're not able to land apply biosalads, that would be a considerable expense for the city of Alpena. They would have to landfill it. So it's, it's not to the point now where it is going to limit our land application biosalads. But if we don't do something about it and find the potential sources and eliminate them, it could very well become a problem in the future. And yes, the cost that I outlined there, that is the cost for the analytical companies sending, because we don't do these tests in-house. They're very complicated. They, they send us the sample bottles. They pay for the cost of shipping and they perform the analysis. And that is a direct pass-through. All of our O and M costs that are in our budget are direct pass-throughs. We do not mark those up at all. We don't make any profit on, on the O and M costs for the utility.
So the
And we don't really know how long this, this could last. If we're able to find the source and eliminate it and can demonstrate that our concentrations are acceptable, then this very well could be taken out of the, of the permit requirements. And at that point, we would look at reducing that budget by the appropriate amount.
Okay. Because we, so the, the CRTC and the abandoned tannery, those, those have been highlighted and, and kind of gone, heard reports of those for quite some time, but, but the water.
There's a source of PFOS and PFO that's getting into our sanitary waste stream, someplace in the collection system. And that's what they want us to, to track that down and try to eliminate where that source of PFOS and PFO is coming into the sanitary system. The analytical costs associated with, with trying to track that down. And I know that Suez's crew has been out looking at various options. The tannery site is one. We've been working with Eagle because they are in there, will be in there doing some more work. So we are working with them on that to make sure that is not a potential source.
And the CRTC and the Johnson Street, those are, what, those are wells? Is that how we're taking samples out of those?
Actually, for, for this, Mike, aren't you pulling this out of the, the waste stream?
We're pulling it right out of the sanitary sewer.
Oh.
The theory, the theory is that if there are defects in those pipes and they're in an area where there's contamination in the soil, that the PFOS is being contributed into the sewer system through groundwater. And it could be just a matter of, in those areas, if it is coming from infiltration from groundwater, that we fix the sewers and keep, keep the PFOS out of, out of the source. We also, as part of this program, we were, we were required to survey local companies and inquire whether they had any products that they were using that would contain PFOS. Looking at the type of industry that we were dealing with, there really isn't anything that typically uses PFOS in their process. So we were able to eliminate that as a potential source. And we're thinking the only sources are the tannery and CRTC.
And I'm assuming that there's no shared cost opportunities here for us.
Not at this point in time. We haven't seen it.
I understand. That's all. That, those were the only questions I had. I kind of wanted to get a better grasp of what we're doing.
We did have a meeting with Eagle and their representatives acknowledged that if it's coming from CRTC, they are the source and they have a responsibility to eliminate that. And that's coming, that's coming from the regulators.
Right.
So it's a possibility.
Yeah, and they've, I've kind of been watching that a little bit as far as who's, what governmental entity is going to take responsibility for that. They have their own battle there. I was just wondering if there was sharing opportunities that, that they might have. They might be responsible for, for doing this testing, not necessarily the mitigation.
That's what unfortunately we're the committee.
That's what I thought, so. Yes.
Yeah.
I have nothing else. Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? I move we approve the contract modification as presented.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, Rich is going to stay here for the lift station telemetry proposal recommendation.
On March 1st, 2021, city received an open proposals for lift station telemetry project. This project will install remote monitoring and limited control of the lift station systems in 14 existing lift stations within the city controlled collection system. Apparently, six of these stations have no working monitoring system and the other stations have analog home monitoring equipment, which is failing and cannot be replaced in kind once it fails. The analog also has a yearly cost of $7,100. Bid documents were sent to eight firms, planned rooms and posted on the city's website with six proposals received as listed below. I'm not going to read through every one of those numbers. I would get tongue-twisted by time when we get done, but most of the companies performed a comprehensive site walkthrough and had very thorough understanding of the scope of the work requested. It was during these meetings that multiple companies suggested the original scope of work, the alter to include prices for upgrading the existing level controllers and rudimentary operation controls. Suez, the facility operators, have a worldwide purchasing discount for one of the components, a big up level sensor. Using Suez to purchase these sensors will result in a significant cost savings for the project as opposed to having the contractors buy them themselves. For this reason, we requested prices for the alternate with the city supplying the level control sensor. Suez's cost for the sensors totaled $7,411.34. Staff evaluated the proposals and called for clarifications from several vendors. As part of the reviews, staff also considered the ongoing system cost for the project. While Thunder Bay Electric is the lowest proposed cost, their yearly monitoring cost is more than we are currently paying. The second lowest proposal from Tempest Enterprise has no annual cost associated with the system. At the current rate proposed by Thunder Bay Electric for monitoring, the city could recover the price difference between the, the two proposals, low bid to second low bid over the next three to four years. Staff was in contact with Tim at Thunder Bay Electric to explain the situation and he understood a rationale for not recommending their proposal. The proposed Tempest system builds on the city's existing, existing system installed by their company as part of the water production plant, SCADA, project in 2020. The new telemetry system will utilize the existing radio system at the water production plant to relay information from the lift stations to the water recycling plant. To date, the operators at the water production plant have had no issues with the system. During their site visit, Tempest noted a few of the controller boxes were deficient. There are also a couple of starters which should be changed due to their age and condition. Prices for these items were included as optional additions to the Prices for these items were included as optional additions to their proposed price. We anticipate no more than six stations needing this additional work and should not exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents. The base bid total of one hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Plus the additional fourteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty cents. Work will bring their contract total to one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Funding has been established in the sewer fund across both this year and next fiscal year. In the amount totaling one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for this project. It's my recommendation to city engineer that the city lift station telemetry project be awarded. In accordance with the attached proposal to Tempest Enterprises LLC. With a cost not to exceed the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. I also recommend city council authorize SUEZ to procure the Vega level sensors for their discounted prices, pricing. Pulling seven thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. Wow. This is, this is something that, that has been ongoing for a number of years and you've probably seen it, you've seen it in the budget. And uh, it, it is something that is long overdue. This is our opportunity to get it corrected and get it behind us. And eventually, uh, you know, while we'll pay for the price difference between the two in the first three to four years. We will have that ongoing savings over our analog system of about seven thousand dollars a year.
Do you have an idea, Rich, on this type of equipment, what the manufacturer recommended shelf life is for these? Is it, or would Mike know that? I mean, is it, is it every seven years, every ten?
I, I honestly can't answer that. Okay. I, I don't know off the top of my head. Steve, I don't know, dude. Did you see anything in that?
Nothing that would indicate a life, but a lot of it is just electronics. It's, it's stuff that's, you know. You know, they're, they're going to put them in enclosures that's protected from the environment. You know, it's, I wouldn't anticipate us looking at anything under the twenty-year mark, I would think. It's, it's not moving parts, you know, it's, it's all signal, it's, you know, it's computer, it's. It's just a bit where no.
Thanks. No other questions here, no question? Uh, yeah, I have two separate motions on that. I move we award the lift station telemetry project to Tempest Enterprises. For price not to exceed one hundred sixty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
Support.
Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
Motion carried.
I move we authorize SUEZ to purchase the Vega level sensors for the price of seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-four cents.
Support.
Mayor Potem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Hi.
And Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That is business C, Bayview Park restroom facilities. Rich is also here for that.
This is the shocking object. The city has been planning on replacing the bathrooms um. To remove, that were removed on Harbor Drive with new restroom facilities located in Bayview Park, near the Bay and Shore and Kitty Park. During the capital improvement plan review by city council and planning commission. The development of these new facilities was requested to become a priority. To that end, staff has been working on information necessary to pursue a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant. To assist in funding this project. MDNR trust fund applications are due on April first, twenty twenty-one. For potential funding on the project in mid to late twenty twenty-two. Then typically we have about a three-year window uh, to complete those projects, two to three-year window. The project we are proposing is to develop a new restroom facility with adequate capacity to meet the needs of the attendees at various events. Which take place at both the marina and within Bayview Park. The old restroom on Harbor Drive had limited facilities and was not ADA compliant. With a new facility, we will accomplish ADA compliance. To be more accessible to event attendees who will now not have to cross the street to gain access. Unfortunately, restroom facilities are not inexpensive to build. And we target developing them for long-term durability and ease of maintenance. The construction estimate for these new restrooms has been established at nine hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. No, these are not going to be plated. They are uh, but they are expensive. I, I think one thing you have to realize is that uh, right now we're probably looking at one of the, one of the worst times for. Costs as far as building materials. Thought, we actually went and talked to uh, the contractor who built the trailhead. Starlight Beach, Beach bathrooms and he, he's seen two to three times uh, percent, or two to three times. The cost and increases for materials uh, that nobody anticipated, but the numbers here are based on that. Granted, through three years, they may be back down, but right now this is what we're looking at. If successful, MDNR trust fund grant, you could obtain up to three hundred thousand dollars in funding towards the project. The city would be responsible for the balance of the funding or six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred dollars. Of which three hundred and ninety-one thousand would be in construction related costs. And two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred in engineering and contingency funds. The site plan and conceptual drawing of the proposed facilities are attached for informational purposes. If city council concurs with staff pursuing the project, MDNR trust fund money. The attached resolution will need to be adopted. This must be submitted with and as part of the application. When I say that, we look at our actual construction costs. We anticipate about six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to, to put the concrete in, the walkway, the support, infrastructure and to build the building. Uh, on top of that, we, we put typically put a ten percent contingency factor, about sixty-nine thousand dollars, ten percent of it. And then um, we do have a cost for design engineering because this, we will need to go out for architectural services. For this and then our construction engineering to use. And, and that's basically staff time. A lot of the site work, in the past when we've done this, we've contracted with the architects to do the actual buildings. And then we will blend our site work drawings in with, with theirs. We did that on trial, it very successfully worked very well. Um, so that is our intent, but um, you know, for looking at the total project costs, this is basically what we're looking at. I know one, one of the questions that came up was potential impact to activities and events. That uh, may take place down in Bayview Park, Art on the Bay. And that, and, and what the impact would be on that. It is going to take up some of the space, uh, but I think we can offset that with uh, moving them around a little bit. And quite honestly, having these facilities right there in the park is going to be a huge asset. To the attendees there as opposed to having to go over to the old public bathrooms and. Probably stand in line for a significant amount of time because of the limited facilities that exist there. Um, we are looking when we um, if this does move forward. That we're definitely going to increase to probably sixty-eight water closets. At least, because we're targeting eight. But, and, and if we get more, we will per, per facility.
I'm going to interrupt the trailhead, just to kind of get kind of concept of how big.
Uh, the trailhead, there's four, four, four family bathrooms there. And that's what we, we would likely put two family bathrooms and then uh. With just a, you know, just a facility so that, you know, mother and son, father and daughter could go in there without uh.
Having to split up or?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's kind of what we did at Starlight Beach. There's some men's, women's and then we get a couple of family bathrooms.
And those have showers, right? The Starlight Beach does.
Starlight Beach has the showers on the outside. This one.
Always on the front. Oh, they don't have any internal one?
No, they're on the outside.
I live too close to use it, I'm sorry.
You just go to the splash park.
Yeah, because I was, my only question before when we discussed this was the design engineering and how, how close we could just mimic one of the other designs and save the costs.
And that's what we would do is UP engineers designed the original Starlight Beach. Uh, we worked with them to modify the design for the trailhead. Relatively inexpensive. Um, we've had some discussion with them already and it's, it's a. They're, they're working on giving us a number for that, but. One, you know, I can't, I can't take their design and hand it off to somebody, some other architect to do it, so.
Got you. Yeah. Okay. So this was just a presentation?
Resolution.
And a resolution is over.
If, if council wishes us to pursue the, the DNR funding, we would need the resolution.
I think we should pursue the funding. Incredibly expensive, but we don't have a bathroom right now. And we don't want a bunch of porta potties. We even talked about putting in, saving a bunch of money and just putting in like a really large. Porta potty kind of style thing, but I think people are just going to be ridiculously, you know.
There's a lot of standing at those porta potties during the bad shell events or something like that.
It does, with the timeframe too, it does give us a chance to potentially pursue some other funding sources.
So I move that we adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash whole three. Support. Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora. Councilwoman Hess.
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Johnson. Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, I put Rich in front of the computer.
That's good.
He know how to operate.
Next up is the Culligan Plaza recreational passport grant. Stephen Schultz is here. So that's Steve.
Okay, uh, some time ago Cindy Johnson and Doug Pratt adopted Culligan Plaza. In an effort to make some improvements, update it and just make it more of a destination for downtown. It became evident uh, very quickly that it needed more than just a, a facelift and they began to work with local partners, including Mike Mahler. Who sits on the first federal, first federal foundation that we're sitting at three times fast. He explained that there may be some funding available through the foundation. Further discussion with city staff led to the agreement that the entire plaza really needed a full upgrade due to the crumbling bricks. Cracked in heaving concrete, leaking irrigation as well as outdated design. When estimates were assembled, it was determined an additional funding, that additional funding was, would be needed because it had become a capital project at this point. This project does fit well into the Michigan DNR Recreation Passport Grant. As multiple projects include public picnic type areas with an emphasis on renovating existing facilities. The maximum requested amount is a hundred and fifty thousand with at least a twenty-five percent local match. Though more is encouraged in course for stronger application. Uh, existing and preliminary design sketches are attached um, as well as the proposed estimate. The primary improvement will be removing the stairs in the depressed fountain area to create a universally accessible area to replace the fountain and replace the fountain. A more updated rounded design. In addition, the entire concrete service will be replaced with several park, and several park amenities will be added as shown. The total project is estimated at two hundred and ninety-four thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. We anticipate asking for a hundred and fifty thousand from the passport grant with the city committing fifty thousand. And the additional match funds to come from various community partners. The first federal foundation, which is still interested in investing in the project, has committed to funding a portion. We are also planning on a fundraising campaign using patronage. Where they will match the funds, will match the funds that we raise if we raise our target as a lot. We intend to discuss funding options with the community foundation from Northeast Michigan. And further, we may investigate selling logo placement on the umbrella tables for local businesses in downtown. Indiana Gentry, the DDA executive director, has also been in discussions regarding this project. She supports it and believes that the DA may also be able to offer some. We believe that the combination of some or all of these efforts will help us reach that fifty percent match for the overall project. Applications are due April first, two thousand twenty-one for the Recreation Passport Grant. I recommend that city council pass a resolution and direct staff to prepare and submit the application for the Recreation Passport Grant. For the Culligan Plaza project. As, as the alternative funding is still not committed, we're requesting that city council commit the needed match funds of one forty, one, one hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. At this time to submit the application. Announcement of awards is expected in November of two thousand twenty-one. And upon approval, staff will begin working with the community partners to commit the remaining funding necessary for the match and settle the application. And there's, there's some existing and proposed. Shots. It won't happen that fast. But um, it's, it's going to offer up, you know, just a nice uh, you know, one level area. And, you know, we look at um, kind of a stage area possibly, the fountain. You know, many different tables and stuff, uh, bollards laying around the outsides. The people don't come with it.
No, I think it's a great idea. We talked about it before, I think before you and Doug got started, just to. Definitely update the accessibility to it because of the sunken living room style thing that it has now. So just to be, just to, just to be clear though, um, the, so there will be a, a fountain of some sort and a, and the, the. The, the Christmas tree will stay in that location.
There's actually plans to rent, to, to, Shannon put in the estimate to, to renovate the existing tree stand and fountain. You know, tree, street game, tree stand slash fountain, you know, thing. So, because that's a. It's quite the work of art in there when you get in there and, you know, the whole pattern has to line up. This is where the fountain goes, you pull the fountain out, this is where the tree stand goes. It's just, it's just so kind of thing. So we want to preserve that, that whole thing.
Great. Yeah, they, yeah, I think it's great and hopefully there's some grants out there available for us to finally move forward and get that. Park update. I, just, just another quick note as far as I, I think when we talked about this a long time ago. I asked about the, the designer of the, of the current sculpture that's in there for the thing. And I know that we don't, you know, we don't. Keep everything forever, but just want to be kind of sensitive to wherever that came from and whoever designed that as to what we can do with it if we change.
My, my understanding or our understanding is that that was fabricated by DPW. In-house a number of years ago when that fountain first landed.
That's what I remember. Yeah.
Now that's pretty cool too, so. Put it out in front of the DPW. And I mean, because they were, that's pretty cool. It's almost a cooler story than if it were to come from, you know. An artist off whoever knows where, so very cool. Um, I really don't have any other questions, I guess, regarding the project. No other questions?
I'm just going to say, I definitely think it's great that we're, we're in a horrible requesting grant fund when it comes to actual. Design elements, though, we'll have more conversations about that in the future. Right. I just like concerns. I see there's zero trees at all. It's a big concern for me to park.
And we had.
So that means we can get into that later maybe, but.
We actually had that conversation at our preliminary meeting and we talked about um, different trees. It's, it's going to be difficult because we're right on, you know, both. We're bordered by Chisel Street and, and Second Avenue, which are both hemmed out streets, um, heavy, heavy salt. And so, and that's why there's trees, some of the trees are not there now. So we have to figure out, you know.
Right. Just making sure that we don't take away all of the elements that make a park, park, which I think is a great lighting there. We hang our beautiful baskets for a month. Right now there's nothing. I mean, I'm just saying, the preliminary, there's nothing to hang beautiful baskets, which, those are gorgeous to have hanging rather than just in a planter on the ground. So. Just some things I want to definitely go over before we, you know, we have.
Are always really good in that park too. I mean, there's plenty of other parks in other communities that are all hard skate along with soft skates that are just seasonal, so. Because I remember when we had the trees in there and I heard how quickly they died, you know, so.
Well, the trees that were, the trees that are currently there are pretty large and we also put lights in them and they're pretty to have lights and, so I mean, I'm just saying. And so, I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot of elements that let us get, lose them all and have a gray concrete pad, which is what the picture kind of looks like.
Just go for tree sculptures.
Sales, sales. Good luck.
We had, we had talked about all the trees and the green scape and all that. And we've investigated and see what trees would be best in that environment. We've also had discussion, maybe trees that are in big planters.
And that, that is, I guess that's equivalent to their four, large four by four planters in here too.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, I have space, make sure to have, there's beautiful flower beds, which I know already be gone because they're under masonry. But making sure to have the, the brightness that comes with the, with the. But also too, there's three different colors of masonry work there now and it does add interest even in off season. And it looks like this is just all gray, just thinking, look at the elements. The park, the park is used even year round. It's, it's in the fall when they do the chili cookouts, so maybe there's not, the tree's not up and the umbrellas are probably going to be down, making sure we have some benches to sit on because people do use it even when the tables are put away. You're going to want someone to sit other than on the fountain. I'm just, just things to think about.
I mean, we talked about putting in the anchors so that if they wanted, let's say chili cookouts there and the weather's not going to be good. The anchors are there, they can get the tents put them on.
Right, planning for things.
So, you know, we're trying to get.
There is, there is some stencil concrete planned for it.
Yep.
It's just not shown because once you put it in a photo, then it becomes, you know, for real and that's how.
I know it's a little common there, but I just want to say I'm going to make sure that we have more conversations before we go down like.
Okay, so there's a resolution that goes along with this one as well.
Yes, I move that way, adopt resolution 2021-04.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hatch?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, next up is the contract with Charter Township of Alpena for fire and medical services. We don't, I don't, I'm a bit unprepared because the correspondence was, with this was a, was an email request from the, from the township supervisor, not being at home with my other laptop, I don't have the email with me now. There was a request from the.
It is online here.
But from the township supervisor, ah, somebody has it. Oh, now it's gone.
No.
That wasn't it?
I don't have a memo, no.
Okay. So in a nutshell, the township supervisor emailed and asked if we would consider discussing a concept of, and correct me if I'm wrong, for contracted services for fire and, what says here, fire and medical services, but.
It's really just fire.
It's really just fire, I think, because of the county, we're in the countywide emergency services already, so. So not to delve too deep, but, and it, perhaps did it ask for, ask if we would be interested in a committee? Or was that some other, that, that might have been some other dialogue?
They were talking about discussion dialogue, if we would be interested in discussion dialogue concerning this stuff.
Yeah, so, so that's pretty much it. And that's probably why there wasn't a big presentation on here because we're just basically kind of opening up the, opening up the lines of communication. Thank you. Here it is. So his email was very simple. For a motion last night for special board trustees meeting 3, 321, the board authorized me to reach out to the city and see if we, you would be willing to start a conversation as to what a contract for fire, it does say fire and medical services would look like. We have been discussing all internal options and we would need to discuss this potential to have any, have the ability to make a sound decision moving forward. Please, but let me know if this, the conversation is something that council will be willing to engage in openly. If this option is on the table, we could then decide how to form an intergovernmental committee to start this discussion. So I, yeah, I knew that, thank you, I knew that it had something in there about a committee. So, so basically, we're just here this evening to see if we want to move forward and kind of direct staff to start a discussion with township about that.
I, I. I'd be forward.
I have issues with it, to have a discussion to see what we can offer them and and then bring it back to them. As I'm just looking at. She's sitting right in front of me. I guess you're something, I'm sorry. With that, I would say, you know, once we go back, that you'll advise us then if they're interested in forming a committee of council members and such, and how they want to move forward on actually just discussing what the services could look like, so. I know, you know, just a quick comment is that I was, I came out originally opposed, you know, to any of those conversations going forward. But, you know, in my, from my view, I, I think that we have to look at all aspects for them right now just because they are, do seem to be struggling with getting some staffing and stuff from that. And from what I understand in discussions with all the members down at the fire department, it seems to be going well with the services that we're providing right now. So I'm very open to at least having that discussion and move forward that way, just to see what we can do if any, okay. Thank you, Mike. And I'm not opposed to any kind of discussion to figure out whatever to forward. Do you, how, how, chief, how would you like to proceed with that?
If it would be possible, I think the motion would be appropriate that you're willing to talk about it and directing staff to see what can be done.
Okay, and then you would just have some dialogue with the township? With the township supervisor and then bring that back to us or how do you, how do you, how do you see it?
We could do it that way, or if there's negotiation to be done, if we get to that point, I would think that elected officials would want to be directly involved in that part of it. But certainly I can work with them on developing a council and then bring that back to you.
Why don't you do that? Why don't you do that? Why don't we direct the chief to do that? Does that make sense?
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, chief.
I move that we direct chief for motion to start this conversation with the township. Support contract and negotiation.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hatch?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Before we move on, I do, would like to make sure that somewhere in that conversation is citizen involvement from the township. That's, that's a big concern that I have. They had a problem with November timeframe. But I did ask them, look, I'm looking for pros and cons.
Okay.
But I'm looking for information from all.
Right now, that's where, we're going to, just directing staff to put a proposal together, so. We won't really get too much into a discussion on how we're going to roll that. Okay, next up is the 2021 fireworks contract and then chief for which is here for this one.
Thank you. Captain Andy Marshall is with me. He's our community risk reduction officer. He's running point on the fireworks project. Andy?
Yeah.
We also know it's fireman Andy. Everyone knows it's fire, fireman Andy.
All right. So once again, it's time to prepare for our annual Fourth of July fireworks show. As you know, the city holds the DNR and the United States Coast Guard license for the event. But all the funding is provided by the community through the Chamber of Commerce, fundraising events. For many years Wolverine fireworks have a column in Michigan as Sir is our contractor for the Fourth of July fireworks show. Their contracts expired last year. We would like to establish a new three-year contract with Wolverine under the same terms and pricing without rebidding it. The reason for this and user requests is that the fireworks operation is quite sophisticated. We have developed a good working relationship with the onsite power techniques, technicians that produce the show. They are a myriad of safety requirements and Wolverine has been very cooperative and compliant with all the such regulations and requests. We have used a couple of other vendors in the past and both cases suffered accidents and even injuries. Because of the shooting location and crowds expected, public safety is paramount. Any miscalculations or safety lapse could injure or kill hundreds of citizens exposed to the city to significant liability. And that no city funds are used to pay for the fireworks show. Purchasing requirements of City Council Statement 18 may not be applicable. We are recommending that council authorize the attached three-year contract at the same pricing and terms, ensuring that the Fourth of July fireworks proceed as scheduled, subject to COVID-19 restrictions in effect at that time. Thank you for consideration. I attempted to reach out to Jennifer from Wolverine just to verify. And I also talked to Adam Cole, who's the Chamber of Commerce president. And for some reason, if we don't raise 19,500, they have been flexible in the past, Adam states. He said last year we raised about 22,000 to 23,000, so I'm not too worried about that and Adam was not either. They've been great to work with. I've been doing this job for over two years now. And every time they are on time, they have the show ready to go usually beforehand and watching the weather and working with the city of Alpena hand in hand at any requirements. So I really recommend with chief's approval, obviously, that we.
Right behind you.
Three-year agreement for the same amount. I can also note that was the same price in 2019 and 2020, so there's been no increase. And these folks that put it on really enjoy coming to Alpena.
I was very, very impressed. The Wolverine was allowing us to back out of the show entirely with no penalty whatsoever when COVID hit and we really couldn't have it. The things are looking up this year and we're hoping that we can go as on schedule.
Yeah, I think, you know, one thing, just a quick comment on that too, is that, you know, we, we love to did a lot of things, but there's certain things that like this, that I really, we're getting a certain pricing, very comfortable with that because they have done a good job. And I remember the times when we were going through vendors that were having accidents. You know, it's a lot of extra stress on everyone down there, so I think this is a good fit for us, so.
And a lock in for another three years, that's right. And there's no worries.
Yeah, I don't have any issues at all. They've been great.
Thank you.
No one's complained. As a matter of fact, this, and we've had, yeah, a lot of accolades for Wolverine, so.
I was still hoping I could get that tree cut down on Third and Blair. So I can see it better.
With that being said, I move we approve the fireworks contract. Wolverine fireworks for a period of three years.
Councilwoman Hatch?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you, chief. That's captain for your work on that.
Thank you.
All right, next up and the last thing on our agenda is workshop to review ordinance 20-454, which is the medical marijuana facilities ordinance. It was just kind of pointed out, I think it was Rich when I walked in, that, that did ask that we remove the first reading of the revised ordinance off because this, it won't be ready tonight as this being the, the workshop to work on that. And with Andrea being relatively new, she wasn't here during the whole workup of this. And she is on the line and Bill Piper is on the line with us this evening, so. I think what we're pretty much going to be able to do tonight is, is to kind of go a little bit further, like what Danny was, had started. And I apologize, I kind of cut him off on our last meeting. But now we're going to get a little, delve a little bit more into what our recommendations for the new ordinance or revised ordinance might be to kind of give Andrea and Bill some direction. And I'm, and I'm thinking that if I heard Rich correctly, that, that Andrea spent doing some, some research as well because a lot of things change and are available to us rather than just saying, okay, well now we're unlimited, so we're, so, so it's just a, so there aren't any other modifications except for to take the limitation of the rubric out, but that's not necessarily true. There's other limitations that we can put on there, if I understand it correctly.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing was in, we had a, a meeting last Friday with Andrea, Bill Pfeifer, Denise Klein and myself and just to look at the impacts from going from Camp Two to unlimited. And I think Andrea is prepared to, to have some discussion points about that as well as Bill, so. Excuse Andrea, would you like to take over?
Absolutely. One thing that I do have, one of the businesses that was awarded a license does have a statement that I offered to read. So I will do that now. We can discuss it afterwards if council chooses. Technically, it is a public statement, so you're not required to. So they first just kind of pointed out some of the retail caps in other cities. So, you know, Royal Oak has two retail establishments like we would have. Mount Pleasant has three provisioning centers and three retail establishments. Madison Heights has three now, but originally had two. But they just wanted to voice their opposition to the planned revision of Alpena's medical marijuana ordinance to allow an unlimited number of provisioning centers to operate within the state. They did want to point out as well that it's not just obviously due to income impacts that this would have. Cities that allow an unlimited number of provisioning centers have the best intentions as we do, but there are many unintended consequences that do stem from such a policy. The quality of product and facilities themselves and municipalities with unlimited, with unlimited provisioning centers does tend to be diluted and the industry as a whole is devalued. So provisioning centers are forced to keep prices low above all else in an effort to compete in such a market. And what that results in to local industries, it incentivizes to offer the cheapest quality products until a majority of businesses either sell off or go bankrupt, leaving vacant buildings and economic hardships. Then the businesses that fail typically become desperate and turn to any solution that keeps them afloat. So desperation leads even good people to make bad choices with far reaching consequences. And a market like that forces typically have a positive effect of many industries, but marijuana is a highly regulated and tightly controlled industry, which makes it different. It is important to remember that regardless of personal opinion to the contrary, there's a, it is a schedule one drug that raises many concerns from communities about criminality. So Bangor Townships and Bay City allow the provisioning centers to flourish without restraint during the early years of implementation. And as is the case with municipalities that have allowed an unlimited number of provisioning centers, those businesses resorted to cutting corners. That included everything from buying cheap or poor quality products to blatantly illicit activity. They personally represented reputable clients in the Bay Area and it was well known that some less reputable facilities were shipping in marijuana from states like California and Oregon in order to offer the lowest prices. They feel that if Alpena did allow an unlimited number of provisioning centers, the city would not only see disreputable businesses exploding loopholes in the law to profit, but would also see an industry in chaos followed potentially by collapse. Alpena not had the chance to fully see the two provisioning centers that were already approved and would not allow the city to acclimate to them gradually. And they request that before council considers an uncapped provisioning center regime, that police officers and the community at large should be able to evaluate the impact of the first provisioning centers. They say that the chaos that will inevitably ensue from a rush process that circumvents the original and fair plan for two provisioning centers will create the same effects that professionals in the industry like themselves have seen numerous times in other municipalities. This experiment has been tried by many other cities in Michigan and states and the end result is always the same, which is a decimated industry with a risk of increased criminality and poor quality products that are supposed to be medical. That was the end of their statement. But I did think that it was important to read before council had a discussion, just to the fact that they were awarded a license and it's relevant. Does council have any questions about that or anything that I could potentially assist in discussing?
Andrea, who was that letter from?
It was from representatives with Green Buddha. They would be the provisioning center near the river.
Can you forward that to, can you email that to us to council?
Absolutely.
It was pretty lengthy and. Quality isn't ideal. I mean, I, I think I caught a lot of what you said, but I, to be honest with you, I wasn't expecting it to be so. quality isn't ideal. I mean, I I think I caught a lot of what you said, but I, to be honest with you, I wasn't expecting it to be so long, or I would have taken better notes. I know that sounds. Yeah, I just didn't, when you started reading it, I didn't realize there were going to be that many points to their letter, so if you could, if you could email that to all of us at some point. Because I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to really take a look at what they have to say a little bit more scrutinized than than I just did.
Mayor, can I chime in as well?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know, I did get a call from a representative of Loom on Friday afternoon as well. So those are the two licensees that were granted licenses. I have not spoke to the folks at Green Buddha, but I did speak to, like I say, a Loom representative. He really was just inquiring about whether council was, you know, going to vote tonight. I told him that our first reading was scheduled. And so I'm not sure if he might be one of the callers online right now or not. But he did ask me as a matter of professional courtesy to just keep him informed of what was going to happen. I told him that we had a workshop scheduled as well, and I didn't know what council's intention might be in terms of other issues under the medical ordinance. But, you know, they did, they did inquire, and they they are interested in seeing what council does in terms of any modifications of the current ordinance.
I do also want to thank council for agreeing and making a motion to postpone voting on it. It is something where the city does have the ability to take some of the requirements from the rubric, the scoring rubric that was originally the application, and make them requirements. So that is what we are currently looking at doing. Just simply put, we don't have the regulations in place currently to handle an unlimited amount of facilities, and it would be very unfortunate if it were passed before those regulations were in place, because that would essentially mean that all of the regulations that we required for the two facilities that have already been licensed, the new licenses that were being applied for would not need to meet all of those requirements. They would only be required to meet the ones that are currently in both our code of ordinances and then our zoning ordinance. So it is greatly appreciated due to staff time, but also community-based planning.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, and I don't as much of a position that I'm sure the two that were selected are in. I think they would be in a worser one if we if we hastily revise the ordinance without some of these other requirements in it, so. How, and you've gotten started on that on that now, or or what is?
I have been, I've been working on the rubric that we did have, just on everything that we required, and I've just been changing it from, you know, do you have this to shall have this. It was the hope of staff that we could meet again as a group, you know, myself and Bill and Denise and Rich to go through some of those things, but the input of council is also much appreciated when it comes to your, you know, absolutely necessary things that you would want from any future licensees or, you know, things that you think are just not quite necessary to have someone, you know, meet as a requirement. So those will, those will be something that we'll have to meet internally with, and then we'll also bring it to council for your guys' consideration. And that was, you know, hopefully in a month or so.
Yeah, I'd be interested, and I, and I just I'm just a bit unprepared for the workshop, and I normally have been, I'm sorry. But I wanted to, I wanted to take some time to also look at to look at some ordinances of of our neighboring communities that are unlimited already and kind of see what they've used as tools to 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 do some requirements and things of that nature. But I don't, I don't know what, if anybody else was ready to bring anything specific to the table for this workshop, I just, I guess that Danny was, so that's awesome. So here's Danny to make me look even worse. But what I'm going to do is if I'm not, if I'm not available to to be in a meeting with with Andrea, Bill, and Denise and Rich, then what I'll do is I'll just, I'll email if I find something that's that's not reinventing the wheel, so to speak, that I'd like to have included. I'll just email it to everybody, so it's, so I'm not waiting until the next time you bring something, and then springing some more stuff.
Is there a way to just schedule a workshop where we can all get together and discuss these things, but it's simple to come on your open meeting?
We, yeah, we've had open meetings, workshops before, and that's what I'd kind of like this to be. It's, it's, it's difficult. It's a little bit difficult in the virtual world. Sometimes.
As I can hold up all my things right here.
If you want to throw them out there, because for me, and here's where I'm at, I'm either, it's always either really easy to everybody be virtual, or it's really easy for everybody not to be, but to have a mix and match, it's making it a little bit difficult. Andrea, for instance, sounds a little bit like she's in a fishbowl where where Bill was a little bit clearer, but so and we, you know, we don't have to rush into this, but if we can have, if you're suggesting like a live, a live workshop where we're all kind of.
I think it's easier to do that. We have everybody together, and they need to bounce and say that's workable, that's not workable. I prefer to look people in the eye and see if there's understanding and confusion, kind of thing like this.
Yeah, and I think it almost sounds like Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like you're asking staff to be able to have a little bit more time to kind of go through this and and go item by item and come back to us with recommendations before we get into this, because, you know, I'm the same as you, Mr. Mary, is like, I've got a couple of things, but I really like some more time to actually go through this again a little bit more thoroughly, just to see if there's something in there since we are on campus that we do want to add or change, but again, I I'm really interested in recommendations of, because everything has really changed again in a year, you know, from what I'm understanding. There's been a lot of things that are being allowed, and it's changed yet, so. That three-week period where we don't have another meeting until April fifth, which is three weeks, that's definitely going to give, is that is that a decent amount of time for for you guys, Andrea, and and I'm not suggesting that you be done with it, that you have like a first reading, but would that give you guys some time to to meet and kind of take, take some perhaps email input, and then we can, you want to schedule another, another workshop, so to speak? That's what I'm suggesting, is that.
I don't think we have to have this done in three weeks.
Not done, but it's the next conversation. Saying all the things from the or from the rubric that we want to make sure are included in ordinance, but we weren't, because we cited the rubric, which will be there, so.
You prefer to schedule it as a workshop after the regular council meeting?
Especially in passing as well.
That would be, yeah, that would be fine. You know, or if you want to suggest a
Another date?
Like on the like we normally meet every two weeks, if you, you know, if we suggested like the twenty-nine as just a workshop for this, rather than even having a part of the meeting, a regular meeting.
I would not be rushed. My only question would be if Andrea feels like she could have a thorough review of it by that time.
Twenty-ninth is the presentation, too, about the community, the hundred-fifth anniversary.
Oh, that's a hundred-fifth anniversary of the city, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, could I chime in just briefly?
Yeah.
I just, I just kind of wanted to let council know, and when we met, we we brought some topics up amongst the committee that met. These are in no order of significance or priority, but I just wanted to throw these out briefly so you kind of know from the staff perspective what we've already spoke about. The first one was the issue that Andrea has already addressed, and that is, you know, where do we go in terms of the requirements that we have on the current licensees moving forward with more licensees? The first issue that I have on my list was the issue that council member Mitchell raised at the last meeting, which was taking a look at the signed part of it. So that was one thing. We also talked about the rubric and making some of those provisions in the rubric standards in the ordinance for any new licensees. We talked about location. The discussion about location was, I think, council may remember, we had a couple of folks in the community that had a little bit of criticism of some of the locations that were available versus some of the locations that were maybe not available, and whether we need to tighten up the language regarding, for instance, a daycare center or something of that nature. We talked about council's previous vote, that we not have anything in the DDA, and we just thought that that is a topic that at least should be discussed and to make sure that if there's been any movement towards change that we discuss that as well. We talked about the issue of recreational, and let me explain this, we're not suggesting to council that they need to pass recreational. What we discussed is there is a priority amongst the state licensing folks that if you have a medical license and you've been successful with your medical license, you're you're given priority on the state level for a recreational license. So we just thought that if at some point in time we we do go to recreational, we wanted to make sure that we weren't doing anything on the medical side that was going to affect people that already had medical licenses and and the priority that they're given from the state. We wanted to have a clear definition on what is blighted property. That became a big issue on one of the individuals, one of the groups that wasn't given a license. And so we want to make sure that not only are we clear on our end as to what we mean by that, but that we're fair to applicants and and make sure that they understand what that means as well. We talked about the appeal process. We did have two appeals last time. We wanted to make sure that we had some more, once again, some more language that was clear. We wanted to have a definite timeline. And that we think is important primarily because of the of the applicants we have, like I say, two of them appealed. And then we also wanted to talk about whether we still wanted to maintain some type of preference or priority as it relates to local ownership. And if we did, did we want to make a requirement that if we were going to give some priority to local ownership, that we, once again, had a clear definition in whether that a local ownership should be a majority owner or whether it could be a minority owner as well. There was one, once again, a complaint or criticism regarding one of the applications that the person may have had a minority member, and they may have been granted points for that when there's some thought that, you know, if we're going to give some preference to the locals, there should be a majority stake in the business versus a minority stake. So those were the things we talked about in our meeting. Those are not all inclusive. We anticipated that council would have probably some other issues that each of its individual members wanted to raise, but that was the discussion we had, and we certainly think that it probably makes sense to have a separate workshop on a separate day, primarily so that everybody can focus just on this, and that we're not trying to squeeze it in during a regular meeting. So that was the content of our discussion last Friday.
This is Cindy. Can I make a couple of comments about what you said, though? You talked about having a clear definition for blighted property. If we're going to tighten up our ordinance and what people need to, what they need to submit to apply, I'm not sure blighted property is even relevant anymore.
Yeah, and it it may not be, but certainly it was just one of the topics of discussion that came up, came up amongst the group, and that might be the ultimate conclusion that we don't, that we don't need to worry about that anymore.
And as far as local ownership, if we're making the plainfield level for everyone, I'm not sure if everyone complies to whatever our ordinance becomes, whatever we decide it becomes, I'm not sure local ownership is even important. I don't want to waste time on things that I'm not sure are important. To me, things that are important is tightening up what we require of the applicants as far as, you know, what they're going to submit, you know, that the application comes with the money, that taxes are paid, that if they're renting, we have landlord rental, that we have a checklist. I think we really missed the boat on checklist. We should have a checklist that, you know, submit it with your application. If the application's not complete, maybe we have, and I got that idea from looking at the state for the medical regulation, medical marijuana regulations, is if the application isn't complete. I would like, this is me, to get two members, whether it's city manager and maybe the clerk, look at these applications, give them five days to make sure that everything that we ask for is in there, that they don't get an immediate response, but if it's not in there, maybe they have a window where they can submit it. And if they don't, this last time it was just too much of, too many moving parts, and the line kept moving. I want us to do it so that the line is drawn, this is what's required, and submit it. And I also think that they need to sign a, an agreement and consent form so that at the end they clearly understand what we're asking for and what what the consequences are if they don't comply, submit, and and do what we ask, so that, that's how we control, in my opinion, that's how we control good applicants, is through what we put in the ordinance.
And one, one, one of the other things that we did discuss was right along those, that last comment, Cindy, about having a checklist that's going to say you have to do the following twelve things, and if an application comes in and there's only eleven there, we don't even consider it until we have that twelfth item filled out and verified, so that that was part of the discussion as well.
It's also very common in larger municipalities to have what Cindy suggested as a, it's called a completeness check typically. So in the event that they don't have everything that's required, it would just be sent back to them, and intake wouldn't be done.
And that's an option, too, but I think that we need to put a timeline on that, because you can't have them keep giving it to staff, staff taking time to look at it, and then giving it back, and then looking at it. I mean, we have to, we're, we're going to assume we're dealing with grownups, and they have to act like grownups and adults and give us what we need and the time we may.
So my question then would be, is with unlimited, you know, is that unlimited year round, are you talking, there's a window every year that they can apply within, or applications can be considered, that's something else that we should decide?
Well, I think that comes down to location. I mean, we've kind of limited to where they can be, so there's there's really, I mean, there's really limited places they can be, so it can just be open.
But my, my question was kind of based on your idea of they have to have everything, or they're going to send it back, so that's why I was wondering, in your vision, you know, are you seeing like a, an application window, like, kind of like when you apply for medical insurance? You have a certain period every year that, you know, if you want to come into this area, this is when you can apply, and everything has to be in by this date, so we're not spending, you know, a year-long path on it, just something for council to consider.
Yeah, and I suppose we could consider that.
Yeah.
And this is kind of where I've landed on this through this whole process, is, you know, we can regulate, we can regulate medical marijuana. We can, and we've limited it to where it can be, but, and we can require all of the things that the state requires of them. And so it kind of tightens up, tightens up who who can apply, you know, who can come in based on all of those requirements, but we're not going to get like twenty people applying. So if somebody comes into town, you know, in June and says, I'm buying that building, I think I'll apply, I think it should be open. We don't limit anybody else who wants to open a business to, you can only apply once a year.
And that's, I was just kind of clarifying, because clarifying just based on, you know, everything has to be in, you know, is that a timeline, or is that just with the application?
I think with that particular application, we don't want them. I think that particular application, we don't want them, you know, staff, staff is busy.
Yes.
We don't want them coming back three, four times a week saying, how's this, how's this, how's this?
So Andrea indicated that she would likely be ready for a, for a workshop session sometime the week of the 29th. So, um, what we'll do is we'll send out a poll to council members to see what, what times and days work best for, for the council members, and then, uh, the only thing we have is that Friday is Good Friday, so.
Okay.
I would also like to just state really quick that I do understand and appreciate where Cindy is coming from in terms of, you know, people submitting or, you know, coming to us three or four times in a week, but that is something that's super common, and unfortunately, we can't prevent people from applying for something, even if they wanted to submit, you know, 50 pages of unicorn drawings and call it their application. I mean, we can't prevent them from submitting that. All we would be able to do is tell them this isn't complete, or, you know, we don't have the necessary information. And that's just from a legal standpoint, as, you know, a building department, as a zoning administrator, I can't prevent someone from applying for something. I can only tell them that it's not compliant, or it doesn't have all of the information that I need.
But even when they apply through the state, and I'm just going to throw that out there, even when they apply through the state, the state, the state will give them five days. If they say you're missing, you know, whatever document, gives them five days to submit that document, and that's it. If they don't submit it, that's it, they're denied. So, uh, I mean, it, it, I think there's, there's probably a happy medium in there so that they don't turn in, you know, 600 pages of unicorn drawings. But, you know, I think that we can, we can figure it out.
That would be a conversation I would love to have with Bill to find out the legalities of that, and if that would be something that we would be able to do, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, Danny, did you want to?
The one primarily for right now would be to add to, um, page four of the ordinance is like this, was before we had a 300-foot distance from facilities, what was submitted from the planning commission. Okay?
Right.
And that was to prevent stacking of, of, uh, facilities around. One of the, uh, areas, so you have the, uh, the old Third Bay Restaurant, the other was the bread across the street, which was within the 300-foot, and, uh, that's, that's really kind of close to each other there.
But the.
We don't want a marijuana district either.
To clarify, because I think I know, that was recommended by the planning commission, but that was not passed by city council. That three.
They didn't have any distance from.
We don't have a buffer between business. No, we have a two-fifty throw.
I, I'm just wondering, is that we're not stacking the facilities that close together to make it a marijuana community?
So I suppose that's something they can look at.
We can discuss it. Yeah, we discussed it before. I mean, and I understand a lot of stuff comes out of planning commission or any other committee, but doesn't get passed by council, and as I, as I remember it, we discussed that one and we ended up not passing it. And we can have the discussion again. I'll have the same, I'll have the same thoughts as I had when we discussed it the first time.
I know, we passed it out of the other place, so I, whether it's a distance tie, I I.
So you'd like to bring that back up?
Yeah, well, yes. But just, just because of, we have these in a particular area, I just don't think this, for whatever purposes of the city, that we would want to have that close together. I mean, because that was Green Buddha or no? It was the one out of Southfield, uh, that, uh, the bread station was going to tear down, service station portion of it, we had the warehouse, that's within the 300-foot area.
Right, but we didn't, but again, we didn't, there was not, there, there currently is nothing in our ordinance that restricts.
There's also, from a party perspective, look at car dealerships, they tend to group together and it's like that thing.
Everybody likes to see their competition from where they are. That's why I might cross your street from Walmart and, um, and it happens in just about.
It actually can improve the level of service and, you know, they want to look better than the neighbor. So, I'm just saying that.
So I guess, in my opinion, everything's open for discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so.
I mean, we have a bit more to discuss, but I assume everybody got the copy of the Supreme Court ruling, uh, on signs, it's like this, content-based signs.
I read it, and I also, and I'm also aware that there are other, regardless of that, there are communities that currently have that in their order.
I'm just saying that we went through again on the planning commission, had to spend a lot of time reviewing the side ordinances from Adam Paul's request because this came out to keep us from possibly being sued for content-based regulations. We had looks, is do you have to read to determine whether it falls in line with regulation or not? If you do, it's content-based. And so it is literally written as content-based.
No, I, I understand your argument. You had a last meeting and you had this meeting.
Clearly unconstitutional and it's part of our oath of holding constitution, and I don't think quitting the language in it specifically is clearly against a very recent ruling makes sense either. I agree with you. I've been on the floor, so.
I just, I didn't see it before, or it didn't hit me before, when we were going over this. For some reason, it was kind of over the head, it's just some things you could look at, but you don't see.
Yeah, right. No, I see it.
Right, that's really log up right now.
So, again, as I said, we will send out a poll and target the week of the 29th, and if for some reason that doesn't work, we'll go for the next week.
Okay.
Do our best to get.
Okay. Yeah, and Andrea, you had, um, I'm assuming either you or Rich or somebody took notes on the, on the several things that we discussed this evening, so we can kind of, uh, move that along as well, so they won't be brand new when we meet in a couple of weeks.
Pull that wheel and pull it all right off the bench.
Oh, that's right. You didn't watch the YouTube.
Actually, um, on the last, there were some questions, uh, from the last council meeting, Anna and I sat in her office and reviewed the minute, or the meeting online so that we could make sure we were doing the right thing.
It's a great option. I'm all for it, so. Excellent. Well, I think we're on our way. That was relatively productive, even though we, I mean, so we just got some stuff out in the air and we'll, we'll have something to build on for sure. Do we need anything on that? I don't think we're going to get the, yeah, so, um, that's our last. Close the workshop and that's all we have. I move you, Jim? We've never. Didn't have to plug my dinosaur, right? Yeah, that's over, girl, don't last as long as you.